Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 8th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Please stand to salute the flag. Madam Clerk.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Agenzio?
Here.
Here, Counselor Cogliandro?
Here.
Here, Counselor Janino?
Here.
Here, Counselor Grino Sawaya?
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas?
Here.
Here, Counselor Herramio is absent. Counselor Kelly?
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna?
Here.
Here, Counselor Nilla Vaselski?
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo?
Here.
Here, and Counselor President Silvestri?
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the journals of the regular meetings of August 13th and August 25th.
All in favor, all opposed?
The City Council will present Riviera Youth Baseball U-10 All-Stars Coaching Staff and Players with a certificate of commendation for winning the Greater Boston Region All-Star Tournament on July 22nd.
So it's always a special moment to get to honor and celebrate unique situations in the city. And back in July, we got a call from Coach Zach to come support and watch the kids play. I believe it was Cambridge? Was it Cambridge? Cambridge, yeah. And it was a great game. It was an awesome pitched game. The kids really, they took a big lead at first. The other team closed it within two runs and we held it out in the end. And that's to your guys' hard work and dedication in honoring the city and representing us in a big way. So we wanted to bring you up and give you guys a certificate here on behalf of the City Council. So I will read them and then I will give them by name. So in acknowledgement of your extraordinary athletic achievement, accomplishment through perseverance, teamwork, and discipline as a member of the Riviera Youth Baseball U-12 All-Star Team and winning the Greater Boston Region All-Star Tournament on July 22nd, 2025 by going undefeated and beating Cambridge in the city championship game, special recognition is hereby awarded to John McCabe, second base. John? Kealan Doherty?
He didn't make it to the house.
Okay, outfield. Angel Rodriguez, pitcher and third base. Albi Gigorio, outfield. Giorgio. Austin Hayes, outfield. Daxton Picardi-Fleyhive. You're welcome. No mistake in whose child that is, by the way. David Bono, shortstop. You're welcome, buddy. Vinnie Carabino, outfield. Nathan Keane, pitcher and shortstop. Oh, you picked that night, huh? You did great. Christopher Lucia, outfield. Jackson Upton, outfield. Travis Peretti, outfield. Good job. Sean Vettieri is the coach.
He's the president.
Okay. Then we've got Zach Babo, outfield. Great job. Coach Zach? Coach Al?
Austin Hayes.
He's got it. Austin?
Oh, Austin.
No one's missing, right?
No, everyone got one? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, the 2025...
Mason Gomes.
Oh, boy. Nope. We're gonna have to print one more. Well, you guys, get in so we can get a picture of you all.
Hey, guys, what do we think? We should drag the mayor in for a photo? Mr. Baseball, Mr. Mayor. These are the ones who lead the charge on a lot of baseball that we do nowadays. The big reason why the league is there is...
Get him up front, though. Get Gomes up front. Come on, Mason.
All of it there.
There you go, good. That's good. Beautiful, you're good.
So it looks like we have a busy meeting. I don't want to take up too much of the time, but I do want to make a short, sweet, and thank you. Thank you to the councilors for doing this. Thank you for the councilors who were able to show up for the game. Thank you to the mayor for the support throughout both spring season and this fall ball season. But Counselor Silvestri said it right, you know? Passion, grit, determination. These kids showed up each and every day. We had a heat wave for the three weeks leading up to this tournament. They were on the practice field crying, "Coach, it's hot, Coach, it's hot." We looked at them and told these kids, "Practice during these days is gonna make the game days even that much better." And they showed up, and they showed out. They wore that Riviera pride right on their chest, and they played each game their hardest, and they won this tournament through and through from the beginning to the end. I'm so proud of the way these kids played and the way they stuck it out each and every game, each and every practice. They are well-deserving of this, and I'm glad the City Council could make this happen tonight. Thank you.
Counselor, item number four, the City Council will present a certificate of appreciation to Linda Redding for her exceptional administrative work for the Conservation Commission.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Would Chairman Rudolph and Vice Chairman Averbach please join me? Mr. Spalvater as well, Commissioner Spalvater. Anyone else here from the ConCon? Wilson? Anyone else that's on the Conservation Commission, please come on up. That's you, big guy. Thank you all. So I was approached by Chairman Rudolph, and he was telling me about some of the duties that Ms. Redding performs for the Conservation Commission. And the only thing that I could equate it to is she is the Ashley Melnick of the Conservation Commission, which is a very high compliment. So I'm not gonna say too much, but thank you for all the work you do. You help a very important body in the city work, and without you, they might actually fall apart. But I'm gonna turn it over to the Conservation Commission, starting with Chairman Rudolph, say a few words.
Thank you, Counselor. Linda, I just want to first say thank you to the City Council today for letting us honor Linda like this. I've had the pleasure of working with Linda for four years now, and each moment is just an adventure, so to speak. In that time, she was always gone above and beyond. Things run smoothly because of you. But she will provide, she provides invaluable support to us in her public capacity, and her attention to detail is second to none. You know, from her coordinating complex schedules, assisting with public record requests, or answering calls when she's on vacation, this woman does it all. And I just want to say thank you very much for everything that you do for us.
Thank you.
When Nicholas Rudolph was named to chair, and I, Brian Averbach, was named as vice chair of the Conservation Commission, we had a call soon thereafter, and the first topic of conversation is, how can we honor Linda? She has done so much for the many years we've been on the commission. We knew that without question, if she wasn't there, our workload, our time, the meetings would not run as smoothly, it would not be as good, and we knew that something had to be done. We didn't know what options, other than maybe an ice cream party, which is still a possibility, I hope. But this seems like a good second choice. But we want to thank the Council for allowing us this opportunity. Linda, honestly, you can say that you go over and above, but that's a simplification in one sentence of what you actually do. So this is just a small amount of what we are able to officially say, but we just want everyone to know that she really is just amazing in every way, and we're so grateful that she is with us. Conservation Commission, no other commission can have her, she's ours.
Linda, well deserved. And it's just her genuine smile before every meeting is a joy to see, and it kind of quieted on a little bit, is that when we have to do the work. So well deserved, and thank you for that smile every time. Thank you. Well deserved.
I'm gonna be quick. Linda, thank you for your hard work, and we really appreciate every meeting and every schedule that you do. So thank you very much.
Certificate of commendation. In recognition of her outstanding work and dedication to the Conservation Commission by consistently going above and beyond to ensure that operations run smoothly, and whereas her attention to detail, organizational skills, and positive attitude make her an essential part of the Conservation Commission team. And whereas coordinating complex schedules and assisting with public inquiries with the utmost professionalism, special recognition is hereby accorded to Ms. Linda Redding. So Linda has nothing to say, we've left her speechless. So I invite everyone up here for a quick picture, and Brian Averbach promised us ice cream. So...
Yes.
Come on up here, guys.
Thank you.
Counselor, item number six, the Chief of Planning and Community Development, the owner's project manager and architect for the McKinley School Project, will appear before the City Council to discuss the project, specifically the construction of a proposed 145-foot radio tower.
Mr. Mayor, Tom?
Mr. President, Honorable Counsel, obviously Tom Skrofsky gets more airtime than all of us, he's here to present, but I just wanted to introduce everyone and then kick it off with a few questions or answer a few questions. But just real quickly, we have Captain Kevin O'Hara, President of the Riviera Local 926, Deputy Chief of the Riviera Fire Department. Chief Kellen wasn't able to be here today, his family had a medical procedure. Whitney Morgan, the Director of the MREC. Jay Mizola, who handles the communications for MREC. And I've worked in the public safety field for, I think, your entire life, pretty much. Of course, myself, Tom Skrofsky, and the Chief of Police, Chief Lovita. Just a quick history, what the Regional 911 Center and the McKinley School Project as a whole, this is a public safety project, and there's also multipurpose use that's gonna be happening at the McKinley School that we all know is a beloved parcel in the city of Riviera that has been defunct for well over 10 years. This opportunity that arose just a few years ago wasn't just an opportunity to restore McKinley School, it was also the opportunity that it was much needed in finding a new home for our 911 call center. If you've ever been in the 911 call center, it is hunkered down in a less than a 4,000-square-foot space in the police station. It is vastly undersized, it is stretched to the limits, to the point where, I'll just say, it's becoming an issue, a matter of public safety. So we were able to kill a few birds with one stone by finding a city-owned parcel, not having to go through a rigorous process of having to go through that eminent domain, parcel-taking, that we all know the city doesn't want to do unless they absolutely have to. And we looked at many different parcels, not just in Riviera, but also in Chelsea and Winthrop. The Beechmont Fire Station was considered. There is absolutely zero parking, the Beechmont Fire Station, and I think we all know that. One of the current issues at the 911 call center right now is limited parking for the entire staff, not enough for the public, of course. The Riviera Police Department, expansion, not really an opportunity, also a butt's a wetland. McKinley School, we all know how that's working out. Winthrop Ave space in the middle of a thickly settled neighborhood as well. And also, I will just say that the area of the McKinley, I'm sorry, the Winthrop Ave site, the League of Special, the former League of Special Needs, where we host Riviera boxing, was a site that was widely considered, could have hit a lot of targets, but kind of the best site for potential other mixed-use areas over there to complement the recreation space over there. So that was ruled out. A bank in Winthrop near the center of town, and a garage site in Winthrop off Shirley Ave. Those two sites were privately owned, the REC was interested in potentially purchasing them, were not able to reach agreements, and some possible contamination over at the sites maybe led them that they wouldn't be habitable. There was other small sites in the area of Chelsea, of course, as we all know, we are in a thickly settled community in a region just north of Boston. There aren't a lot of great sites. So there have the McKinley School. The renderings that we brought at the State of the City on March had this beautiful site. The proposed tower is actually in the renderings, if you see it. I'm not a public safety expert, I'm not a communications expert, and I'll just say that if someone said, "You needed a 60-foot tower," I probably would have taken them for their word. If they said, "You need a 150-foot tower," I probably would have taken them for their word. But like you, I would have said, "Hey, this tower, can we talk about the safety of it? Can we talk about the logistics? Can we talk about reducing it?" And there we come to today. You have requested, and this is in front of the ZBA, I want to remind everyone, out of, with all due respect, remember, I was a counselor, out of total just consideration for the city and the neighborhood, we went into the ZBA. We do not have to. Do not have to go to the ZBA, the city is exempt, the parcel, the program is exempt. But we wanted to still do the due diligence and do it the right way. That is something that I think that is the way to do things. Going back to the right way, the current site doesn't have a tower because, quite frankly, not done the right way. And the public safety experts will tell you why the tower is needed. Now, the largest, the biggest question that you want answered is, can we reduce the size? Can we change it? Can we look at another space to potentially put this tower? Yes, the answer is yes to all of that. We are going to ask for a study, it is gonna cost a few dollars, 911 will be paying for that, obviously the region will be paying for that, and we are gonna initiate that. That may entail reducing the scope or the size of the communications tower. What I will say is, that is going to give you the opportunity, we're gonna give you the opportunity to ask for it, we're gonna do it, but we're doing this site. This is being done for the best of public safety. That's not, that really isn't up for debate. We took a look at all these locations, we did find the best site, and there is not a really, there is no space in the city of Riviera that is not thickly settled and/or around people's homes. This site happens to be more around commercial space than it is homes. Yes, I understand the quote-unquote "fall radius" does fall, and the site radius does hit. I live in the hills. I will look at this tower, too. It is not as big and burdensome as you may think, that's probably why you didn't see it in the pictures in March. It is kind of tucked away, and it's not this thick steel, you know, 70-foot in capacity, is 20 feet in width, and it continues to shrink as it goes up to the point of less than two feet at its top. So it just goes up like this, with very few pieces affixed to it. But I just want to say it again, and Tom's gonna answer a lot of the different questions, and the other big question, no radiation? This is non-ionized frequency? No radiation, microwaves. I'm not an expert on that either, but some of the experts here can probably talk about that. But the last piece, we always talk about public safety, we always talk about doing the right things. Yes, sometimes that comes at a cost. I don't think that that should be debated here, and I don't think that anyone here would disagree with me when it comes to the seconds that matter, when it comes to communicating in public safety. We talk about it all the time, ambulance times, fire response times, police response times. This is talking, and I'm sure Captain O'Hara or Deputy Chief will be able to say it, or Whitney, or the Police Department, this is talking to a first responder in a burning building, in a burning building. And if we lose communications like we have because we don't have the tower, because we did not build it properly, because we've lost redundancy, if we lose communications for five seconds, for 10 seconds, for two hours, is that fair to the 130 fire personnel that we have? Is that fair to the 110 police officers that we have, never mind the region? It's not. So I think that we owe it to them to do it right, and I understand there is a little burden that falls with that, and trust me when I say, I said this at the ZBA, if we can come up with a more rational solution that is less burdensome, we will do it, within means. And I promise you that, we're gonna do that study, it is gonna cost some thousands of dollars, and if we can reduce the height by 20, 30, 40 feet or more, we will do it, within, as long as it's rational. That's what I have. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. So the mayor covered most of the ground I wanted to, so mercifully, for once, you will not have to hear me speak too long tonight. But I did bring along our public safety professionals to answer some of the operational questions that you all had at the last meeting. Unfortunately, our consultant from Introba, who spoke at the ZBA hearing, is not able to make it tonight. We wanted to still hold this due to, you know, this being the last City Council meeting until our next ZBA meeting, where we'd like to make a decision on this and move forward with this project without making a decision in September. We will miss critical milestones that might not allow this facility to open up in time for the school year, for the ECC, and to help move forward this consolidation effort between the three communities in the state-of-the-art 911 call center that, as the mayor mentioned, is above and beyond and far superior to the inadequate facilities that we have today. And again, public safety team can speak to the importance there. But just a few quick notes. So as the mayor mentioned, we're undergoing a study right now, a microwave path analysis, to see what we can do to reduce the size of the tower. What we do know is that if we're able to reduce it, it's going to be by at most 40 feet, at significant cost, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and in a way that would reduce some redundancy in the system and make the system somewhat less effective from a public safety standpoint. Nonetheless, we understand we've got a 145-foot tower, we're going to try to reduce it within reason. We're getting that study done, and our OPM at PMA Consultants is also conducting a peer review amongst folks in the field to see what we can do to lower the size of the tower. One concern I did hear from some City Councilors was another example of a tower in Lynn, I believe the Waynes Alarms Tower in Lynn, that is over 345 feet, and it is double the size in diameter. That is a massive tower, that is nothing like what we're looking at here. So just to put it in the context, you could put City Hall and put two of our towers on top of City Hall, and you would still have a little breathing room. So that is not the scale or scope that we're talking about here. Happy to answer any questions about specifics that you might have. As the mayor mentioned, with regard to safety and radiation, there is a communication from the FCC and their guidance on microwave and radio radiation for towers of this nature, and their findings are what we would see here is thousands of times below what would be that threshold for, you know, threshold for concern, if you will. So, you know, from that standpoint, I think we feel pretty good. And then from the fall standpoint, as the mayor mentioned, where you want to consider what the fall radius would be hypothetically, or something to happen, the only residential unit within the fall radius, obviously, is the one directly abutting the tower itself. But aside from that, it's all... and their findings are what we would see here is thousands of a time, of, at times below what would be that threshold for, you know, threshold for concern, if you will. So, you know, from that standpoint, I think we feel pretty good. And then from the fall standpoint, as the mayor mentioned, where you want to consider what the fall radius would be hypothetically, were something to happen, the only residential, you know, within the fall radius, obviously, is the one directly abutting the tower itself. But aside from that, it's also, and this is really more important, it's designed to withstand a winds of a force greater than the F2 that ripped through Revere 10 years ago. So this is a, from a public safety standpoint, the utmost stage-four classification from a building code standpoint. It needs to stay upright, even in those worst-case scenarios, because it's a 911 call center and needs to continue to operate at capacity, particularly in those emergency situations. So the design of this tower was done with that in mind, to make sure that these wind speeds and everything could withstand it. But again, to the mayor's point, for the most part, we're surrounded by a lumberyard and the facility itself, not to downplay it. Happy to answer any questions you might have, and also if there are any operational questions as to what this means for the REC and police and fire. Of course, I've got my colleagues here to answer those. Thank you, Tom. Counselor Agenzio?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the mayor for that presentation, and thank you, Tom. Now, I had asked the OPM, the architect, and the person from Introba to be here tonight, and none of them could make it?
The folks from Introba could not make it. The OPM and the architects, particularly with the architects, they're not the ones designing the tower. And the OPM, I'm not sure would tell you anything differently than what I'm telling you tonight, except that we have to, they charge by the hour. So I prefer to answer your questions.
So, Introba, are you going to start paying them? I mean, aren't they obligated to respond to the city? I mean, this is a month they've had of wanting to be here.
Correct. So they've supplied me with, I think, all the answers we'd need, and any that I can't provide tonight. My goal would be to put forward a memo in response to the city council, and to, like I did at the ZBA hearing last week, I tried to respond to many of your concerns that came up in coordination with them. But unfortunately, it's a one-man operation, and they're just not here.
Okay, well, that's disappointing. But, so the first question I've had was health and safety. There's been a lot, and I had hoped to hear from an expert, but maybe we have experts here tonight. Some preschool teachers contacted me. They're very concerned about microwaves, 3G towers, 5G towers, radio signals, and I had wanted somebody to be able to make a presentation to ensure us that it was completely safe. I know the fire department had come up here very passionately about a 5G tower in their central fire station, and it was removed. And so I think residents are focusing and are remembering that presentation, and thinking something like that is coming to the McKinley School site, and especially where it's a mixed-use building with young children in it. So that was my first question to the experts, but if you feel as though you can answer that.
I would like my colleagues at Revere Fire to help me out here.
Good evening, everyone. Kevin O'Hara, Revere firefighter's president, local 926, captain on the job. Counselor, so back in 2019, I fought the cell phone towers on top of the fire station, and Counsel McKenna and myself also fought the mini-cell phone towers atop of telephone poles throughout the city. Now, the big difference of that is, like, as Tom said earlier, was ionizing radiation and non-ionizing radiation. Those aren't 5G towers. So our biggest concern of the firefighters, we had a fire, we get the stick up to the roof with 35 feet with our telephone pole, and the radiation off there is very high levels of radiation. On a radio tower, we have microwaves. Now, the difference between the radiation on the self, the 5G towers, it damages DNA, causes cancer, high risk of cancer. On a radio tower, very minimal, doesn't cause damage to DNA, no cancer related. Now, that's the difference. So, you know, and I know, I know as soon as this happened, too, now, we've been talking about doing this for a few years now, and, you know, this tower, as soon as it happened, that's the first thing I did, I said, "Wait a second here. Let's find out how dangerous this is." That, because I got to, my job is to protect the brothers and sisters, local 926, and represent the citizens also. So we, you know, we looked into it, and it's all microwaves. Does not cause DNA, damage to your DNA, does not cause cancer, all right? If I would not be up here stating that. We need this. This is for our communications. And I could give you an example of what we're dealing with now. We, you know, our dispatch center needs to be centralized. It needs to go to a separate building. Because I work with the police, I worked on the fire department, I did the dispatch. You can't have firefighters going to the dispatch. You can't have police officers going to the dispatch. You need to centralize them. Our dispatch needs it. We need to improve in the dispatch. We really do. We have a couple of struggles here and there, but we get through it. But communication, too, I'll give you a perfect example. Ten Franklin Ave, a couple of years ago, Deputy Rich was in command. I was on the, I was right on the third floor, talking on the radio, couldn't get through. I had to go to a window, stick my head out, and yell to the deputy, and he says, "Do not cut the hole yet." Because if I cut the hole without getting in the water, we could all die in there. So that's what we deal with. Communication is key. And I know it's 30 feet we're talking about, because if we go lower 30 feet, now the signal's bouncing three different directions. We stay at the 144, we get a direct connect. And when I talk about communication, I mean in the buildings, on the lower floor in Ocean Ave. When we're in those parking garages, we have trouble. We can't hear sometimes. When we're in a high-rise building, the higher up, we have trouble right now. We need the help. And we, this is, you know, the union, the fire department, we've all been working together on this. This has been a three- or four-year project now, Mr. Mayor, since, since former Mayor Regal was here. This was the talk. So I hope that answers a lot of the questions we had, and that's it.
Thank you, Captain O'Hara. So I wish some of this information had come to us prior. Like, my biggest problem with this was the 145-foot tower was only revealed to us a few weeks ago. Information like you just presented, two years ago, a year ago, would have been very helpful in our decision. So part of my problem, or the biggest part of my problem, is this just was sprung on the neighborhood just a few weeks ago. So thank you for your presentation, and I believe you, and you did your research, and thank you. Some of the other questions I had for Introba, I understand that 95% or 99% of the communications will go through fiber optics, and this tower is kind of a backup. And the worry is, if fiber optics are disturbed some way due to an accident, I don't know if they're underground, I don't know if they follow along phone poles. Can a second fiber optics network following a different path, is that an alternative? Is a smaller antenna at the McKinley School and a larger antenna put off-site, a more appropriate location? That was a question I had for Introba. So those are some questions that I, if somebody's capable of answering those, I'd like to hear the answer.
I don't want to interrupt, Counsel, too. I also want to mention, at 400 Broadway and the fire station, we got a tower up there now.
Jay, how big is that tower up there?
50 feet. It's been up there for a long time. So, I mean, it's on top of the building. This is starting from the ground up. So how much from the building to the 50 feet above? What are we talking, 90 feet, 100 feet already?
Probably 100.
100 feet? So we're talking about another 44 feet. It's, and I know, and we do respect the residents, we understand that, you know, it could be an eyesore in the neighborhood, but I didn't mean to interrupt, I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, no. And there's no question, no one's doubting that this is necessary, believe me.
Thank you, Counsel.
So I'll answer your second question, and then Jay Mizzola from the REC can take the first. So in the alternative path analysis that we're looking at, we're looking to do just what you had suggested. Look at whether it's up on Reservoir Ave or in the Shirley Avenue neighborhood, there's a few towers where we could basically have a microwave signal that this could be a key hub in that system. But if you all recall what I had mentioned at the last meeting about having kind of a hub and spoke, the hub being the McKinley School, the spoke being all the alternative sites, if everything else blacks out, we've still got that hub-and-spoke system. We are looking into doing this, and will pursue it quite seriously if we have an alternative repeater path. But it will create at least one less piece of redundancy in the system, because then we are relying on that other system up on, whether Reservoir Ave or Tower or otherwise. As to the first question, Jay, do you want to?
Regarding fiber?
Yes.
We have a robust system now for City Revere that the school system runs. It's a loop system. If it cuts in the middle, it'll go back either way. The problem is, a lot of parts of the city, they run on the same poles. So they have separate cables, but if the pole goes down, we lost both of them. So that's why we need the microwave to give us direct link from our radio tower at McKinley School to our radio sites. And that's, we've had that problem in the last two, three years of different scenarios that we lost them. We lost the fiber link, and that means we lose our main communications. We do have a backup system, but the backup system doesn't give us half as good a coverage as we do, always as a backup. You know, and again, when the fiber is down, it takes days and days, sometimes weeks, to get back up online.
And Jay, I have one more question for you, if you mind. At the ZBA meeting, you mentioned that at the current fire police station, there was space for a tower and it was never built?
That's correct.
Do you know why that was never built?
I have no idea.
And so have you, so right now, for the last quite a few years, you haven't had this redundancy that you're seeking now?
No, that's where we're losing, that's where we need it. Now, again, even if we put a tower at the police station, that's not going to help us at McKinley School. If we kept the, if we kept the dispatch at the police station, that would be fine.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could just also answer, and Counselor Agenzio, I understand, you know, it's your word, and certainly, I appreciate you bringing up the questions. I just want to remind everyone, there's this kind of thought that this was hidden. Everyone here, if you've seen a 911 call center get built in the last 10 years, they've all had towers. So I think the assumption is, you should, we should have all known it comes with a tower. The height is the variable. So when we had found out the exact height, it was sometime in June. That's when it got presented in front of the ZBA, and that's when it got brought to the council's attention. So there was no attempt to, you know, hide information or wait. Certainly, we don't want to go through this back and forth. We want to be able to answer all the questions. It's similar to questions we've asked. Send us the questions, we'll give you the answers. We don't want to debate up here. We're all on the same team. We all want what's best for the city. But, you know, just know that if it's right at 140, or right at 200, or right at 50, two weeks ago or today, it's the same exact right. So yes, you may have time, more time to digest it, but you still have to walk away with the same answer. We have to do what's right for the residents of Revere and for our public safety officials, and for everyone that comes through our city. And that's, that's the tough decision, that's what we're all here for. Thank you.
So, Mr. President, through you, I, in no way suggesting that this was hidden, but this study, as I've said before, should have been the first thing that was done, prior to any plans or anything. That's, two years ago, the communication study from the McKinley School should have been done, and we would have known this two years ago. So I'm not suggesting that anyone hid this or is doing anything nefarious. I just, the order of operations seems to have been backwards.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know Deputy Rich had a few comments he wanted to bring up as well, but please, we welcome your questions. I'd like to get as many answered tonight as possible.
And Mr. Skarowski, just one question I had about the ZBA. I understand abutters letters went out, and only the parcel that the school was on, those abutters letters went out. The parking lot next door, those people that abut that weren't included in that, and I think those residents kind of felt left out of the conversation. You could technically be living right directly across the street from the parking lot of the McKinley School, and you can throw a rock and hit the tower, but they weren't notified. So I'm sure that was an oversight, but, you know, maybe by next ZBA meeting, we can rectify that, or I could even pass.
Yeah, I can certainly speak to the folks that do the advertisements for the ZBA meeting. I was glad to hear that they were at least aware of it nonetheless. Hopefully, a lot of the press we've been doing, you know, and you've seen it in the Journal and so forth, has spread the word, where everybody who's affected would know. But that was certainly, you know, the parcel, the building is two parcels in one, merely an oversight, one will look to correct.
Okay. And I think this conversation that we're having is healthy, because if we didn't bring this up, we're now talking about maybe it can come down 20, 30, 40 feet. Maybe there is an alternative. So I think this conversation is healthy for everybody, including the neighborhood. So thank you.
I appreciate you bringing these issues to our attention. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, I was just wondering, do you guys, if this goes through, do you have a placement for this tower? Because I know on one side, there is more commercial than there is on the other side. There's some more residents on one side, and there's more commercial on the other. I was just wondering if you have a placement, and if you do, would you put it on the commercial side more so than the resident side?
We do have a placement. It was in the ZBA packet and in what I presented last week. It's on the Foster Street side of the property, directly adjacent to the rear entrance to the building. So again, to your point, a little bit more shielded from both of you.
One hand, lumber?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all for being here tonight. I appreciate you coming in and taking the time to give us some information, because this is a big issue for me, and I know for a lot of residents. So I just want to make one thing clear. The study that's being done is just going to revisit the height, correct? Nothing else?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, and there's no, I understand that we can't relocate the hub, the whole facility. I understand that. He went, the mayor was kind enough to go through those alternate locations that didn't work out for various reasons. But is it imperative? Is it absolutely a requirement that this tower has to be at the site? Can the tower be relocated somewhere else, and has that been looked into?
So you're, Jay and others can answer this better than I can, but again, if you're effectively removing the hub from the system, the hub-and-spoke communication system, so if the fiber goes out, the microwave needs to reach its various paths, and it needs to be at the most direct point, most proximate to the 911 call center. So were we to relocate the tower elsewhere, we would find ourselves vulnerable to the exact problem we're trying to resolve, because ultimately, we would then have to communicate with that tower through fiber, and we're still opening ourselves up and are vulnerable to a disconnection disrupting the system entirely. The idea here with the tower is, if something happens on any of these fiber lines, you always have the alternative of a microwave communication point.
Okay. But unless we were in a situation where we had extremely high winds, then the tower itself could also be not functioning, or be prone to some disruption?
So the tower, again, is built to withstand winds above the grade that we saw in that tornado over a decade ago. So it's basically a 700-year event. And even that, this is meant to withstand that and designed to withstand that.
Okay. And the studies that were mentioned about not having any health concerns from this type of frequency or microwave, I'm not, I'm not an expert in this, so I'm not sure, but I know that the FCC studies that were done, there are a lot of conflicting studies with those, that the FCC studies say that there are no health effects or no health hazards, but yet there are other studies that contradict that. Now, I'm not sure if it's the same, you know, one of them said that non-thermal biological impacts weren't looked at enough. Those FCC studies didn't look at that enough. So I don't know if that's something that we would have to be concerned about here with microwave.
So the FCC studies were influenced both by their international peers of a similar scope, and the National Council on Radiation Professionals and Measurements, along with the Institute of Electronics and Electronics Engineers. And the comment that you referenced, I think, specifically speaks to radio frequencies, but what the FCC and their guidance did find with regard to microwave paths is that it, given that it is a direct beam, the dispersion of energy beyond that beam is, quote, "minimal or insignificant," because essentially, you think of it like a DirecTV tower, right? That's like a microwave ray. It is collecting and dispersing communications in a very concentrated manner, and that concentrated manner in this case is, you know, 145 feet up, or maybe 110 feet up, but still high enough nonetheless, that there's going to be some really focused dispersion of energy that wouldn't expand beyond that.
Okay. And is this a result of us, this tower, this size? Because right now, we are coupled with Winthrop, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we are adding Chelsea into the loop?
Correct.
So is the tower necessary, one of this size, necessary because of the fact that we're adding Chelsea in? Or would we need that regardless?
We would need a tower nonetheless, of at least 110 feet. And so what we are now looking at is the potential through this alternative pathway analysis to bring the analysis to bring the height down. So there is a, there is a slight delta in bringing Chelsea into the fold, but it's one, we're exploring whether there are different ways to go around it, but either way, it's going to be a tall tower. I think we can all agree 110 feet is pretty tall as well.
Okay. And so I guess my last point is, with all the other concerns I have, and I have several, and the biggest concern I do have, with all due respect, I understand that the renderings, this may have been depicted in the renderings that we saw in March, I didn't see it. Not only that, it was not discussed. So I mean, maybe if it was, you know, included in the discussion, maybe we would have seen it, you know? But I'm not suggesting either, as Counselor Argenzio said, that anything nefarious was going on or if it was intentional. But I am very disappointed that I voted on that and didn't have this piece of information at that time. Go ahead.
Just to, Counselor Kelly, Mr. President, I just want to make it very clear, the council did not vote on the tower or the building. The council voted on MREC adding Chelsea. That was it. As far as constructing the building and approvals, it's not for council matter. At some point, and I think Counselor Zambudo has mentioned not funding the site, that would be a shame as far as it goes, there's, a lot of the funding is going to be coming from state 911, so you lose a little control there, but you would be hurting the office administrative space and the early childhood education space possibly. But I wouldn't want to do that, I would never threaten the community with, with not funding something because I didn't get my way. What I will say is, you didn't vote on the tower or the, or the scope of the building, that's not in the purview of the discussion of joining of MREC. We could join MREC, we could have Chelsea join tomorrow and bring them into the site at the police station, or we could go to their site, which is also about 4,000 square feet, it won't be very comfortable. So there was, again, not, not, just a lot of confusion and, and I would just say that let's just stick to what's, what's actually here. But as far as the discussion, we're here tonight. Let's ask the questions. We came out of consideration by the council's motion. We'll answer every question you have, I'll stay here as long as you'd like. This is going in front of the ZBA, I think later this month, and the ZBA can certainly ask more questions, but this, this is a discussion that you wanted to have. I'd rather answer, I'd rather answer as many questions tonight as you'd like to ask. So if you prepared them, we're here.
I appreciate that and I appreciate the clarification on that. Thank you very much. So my last question is, my last concern, the biggest, one of the biggest concerns I have is absolutely property values. There was a 2019 National Association of Realtors study that was done, that said property values are affected within 1,000 feet of the tower. I, I just, that does not sit well with me. I mean, and I, I can speak from a professional, from as an expert, being in the field for over 20 years. It will definitely result in a property value decrease for those homes that are surrounding there. I understand miney hand lumber is behind it, but there are also homes at the end of Foster Street, out to Park Ave, that area of Park Ave, Yeman Street, Vane Street. So it, you know, I have a big problem with that. So I think even more notice in this situation where, goes back to my point that I've been talking about for two years, that that 300-foot abut notification zone is inadequate. And if you're going to affect property values of up to 1,000 feet away, but only inform people within a 300-foot radius, that's kind of, doesn't make any sense at all. So if maybe we could go back and try to get more notification to residents so that they know about this, I understand that it's in the vein of public safety and we need it, I'm not, I'm not contesting that, but I know I wouldn't want it next to my house or near, I wouldn't want to be near it. So thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. President, I don't disagree with you as far as your experience and you are very experienced. As you know, I'm also, was active in the real estate investment, or not investment, but sales world, like yourself, certainly more experienced you have. What I will say is in my, my notice is, public safety in the community was a big driving force with people buying in certain communities. This will enhance our public safety and enhance our values of our homes. Living next to empty blighted warehouse buildings is certainly something that people don't enjoy. The school is currently in, in its shape as an empty building, is probably more of a blight on the neighborhood than, than what will be restored, early childhood public education center, a regional 911 call center with the training facility and administrative space with vibrant footprint with the park. We, we feel very comfortable that this is going to enhance the value, but you did mention the neighborhood. You are correct, we should, but we should notify more and I know that if someone wasn't served, they'll make sure they get that. But currently, there's a lumberyard that brings in 16, 18, 24-foot trailers, three to six times an hour in the peak of their sales. There is an auto body shop, there is a massage parlor, there is an orthodontics, there is an insurance agency, there's a bank, and there is a law firm, a church, and aesthetics, are the current businesses that are in the area. I would, I would say that some of those businesses may enhance the area, but I don't know if I'd want to live next to a lumberyard either, but again, people do live there and they enjoy it and they should be able to value their homes. This is not going to be a blight on the neighborhood and this will not detract in the value of someone's home. I'm, I can, I can assure them that. However, again, in the finality of the process, we have an abatement process for taxes. If someone's concerned with their value and they, and they want to bring facts, the accessory's office will abate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start by thanking the mayor for listening and taking a look at the size of the tower. Now, everybody knows I came to the city council many years ago and my goal was to build a police station. We succeeded with that. I was a champion for the regional 911 and I took a lot of heat for that. And there's some former chiefs that still don't speak to me today because they thought it was a power struggle and it had nothing to do with it, it was complete public safety. And that's where we are here now. I said some, I was a little hot the other night because it was thrown upon me, the last thing I will ever do is hinder the rec center. I, I mean, I don't change my goals because I've been here 25 years. I know how important this is. I appreciate the fact though, that the team is looking at a possible alternative or maybe reducing the size of it. And, and that's a big get. And I know it's expensive to do that, but I think it's worth it. And, and I think that the neighborhood is, is, you know, better off for us looking at all of this and talking about all of this. This, this discussion tonight gives a lot of education to, you know, the, the captain was up here, we had a, we had a shouting match years ago about, and, and we still probably disagree on the 5G stuff and, and, but I see his point fully and, and, and that's what this is all about, is about discussing and we know that especially now that we're going to bring it on Chelsea, we want the most state-of-the-art system we can possibly have. That's what I'm in favor of. Again, I appreciate the effort to try to appease us and, and we can argue that, you know, it should have been discussed better and we should have been more aware, but we're here now where we are and, and we're, we're looking at every, every piece of this. And, and also the, you know, the property values are an issue, but like you say, there are a lot of not great uses on that street anyway, to start with. So I mean, you, you certainly did an inventory of everybody on that street and, but I appreciate the effort and, and, you know, I'll, I'll listen to the experts, of course, and, but it would be nice if, if we came to 100, 100 feet or 110 feet rather than 145 feet. But whatever, whatever is required without a big, without a big, you know, we don't want to sacrifice the safety. This whole point of putting a rec center there is to improve it and, and with Chelsea and, and all the grants you're going to get to pay for this, it's all great stuff. And I just remember back when we were on Pleasant Street with the police station and people used to break out by hitting the cell with their elbow. And so we've come a long way and now we're in, we're in a final stretch of real public safety. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for listening the other night, even though I was a little excited and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliano.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Counselor Zambudo touched on it, how, how much does this cost and how are we paying for it?
Thank you. Whitney may have some more of the figures. So the, the all-in project is probably, including the school and the administrative space, is probably in the tune of 30, I think the estimates from PME, PMA was about 30 million in grants and SRF funding, there's somewhere in the tune of 20, potentially 21 to 22 million dollars that is going to come to us. So the thought processes at some point in time, there'll be an ask and, and something south of $10 million to, to round out the funding for the entire project. And I will just say that we've already started some of the work with some of the money that we've gotten from 911 grants, bids are all coming back less, so again, we feel confident. And then the last piece is the $5,000 to $7,000 in rent that we're currently paying in some of the administrative space per month will also be an offset. And then the last piece is just by joining the regional, regional 911, the assessment to the community will be south of, will reduce by approximately $250,000 a year. That in itself will cover a lot of the debt schedule. So the savings, the 911 cost savings per year by sharing the expenses with another community will be, you know, between 2 and $250,000 a year. So we, we feel very confident that this is going to almost cost, nothing, ever cost nothing, but we're going to, we're going to do this very, very safe of spending lots of cash.
Thank you. Another question is, we're, now we have Chelsea on board, is, are there future plans to bring more cities on board?
You know, when we started this process, it was a big reach to our surrounding communities. As soon as Chelsea signed, I'm not going to say the other community, but we got called for another community. We are building this so that we can grow to at least one more. I don't know if we would want to go that quick, but we will have the capacity to add another community and a community, smaller community had already, has already reached out because they know that it's, it's a struggle. And it's a struggle to staff these centers, it's a struggle to equip them, it's a struggle to stay up with the technology and we're going to be able to do all of that, so communities want to jump. And if that happens and we spread the costs out another way, you know, maybe five, 10 years from now, it'd be another savings to the taxpayers of Revere and it would just show our strength. But nothing immediate, we don't, we want to walk before we can run.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'm, I'm not too crazy about the height of the tower itself, to be honest with you, but when I have Captain O'Hara speaking about the positive parts of it, I have deputy, senior deputy standing here and the police chief, all the favor of safety on it, it's kind of had to go against it. And I said, I've been on both sides of that radio with the dead ends, the dead calls on it, no reception on it. When I went on the job, we had five radios back then and some guys didn't get a radio, so I know the importance of it. But that's it, if, if there are other options to bring it down a little bit, I'd appreciate it. If not, and the unions are on board with it, so let it be. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you to the mayor and, you know, I actually missed my members of the council and members of the team. I am concerned about the height. I'm glad that you're talking about possibly reducing it, but I have three things that I want to address. And I didn't see any renderings back in March on this item either, but on the tower, I understand it's a 20-foot square base that this is going on and I was wondering, does this have guide wires that are going to support it in any way, shape or manner?
No guide wires whatsoever.
Is this a plastic pole or a metal pole?
It would be metal.
Metal pole, grounded, of course. Okay. How far down underneath?
Six, six feet.
Six feet?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Okay. The second item I had was what Counselor Kelly brought is property valuation. You know, I think valuation is going to go down in these, in this neighborhood, there's no question in my mind, because people don't want to have to live within 300 feet of a 110, 145-foot tower. And it's going to be hard to sell a house when someone sees that sticking out of the ground, especially if you're talking 10 to 14 stories high. It's like some of those buildings on Revere Beach. So that's my feeling on that. The other thing is, on the tower, are we going to be able to rent space to cell phones companies on it? Or is it just going to be for our rec center?
I, I think that, to answer that, I would say that you probably could, that would not be our intention.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we wouldn't, I'm just being, you probably could, we will not be doing that. But that's not the, we don't want to do it, especially if it's, if it's going to, we're, we're telling you, we're not going to provide, have unsafe environments on there.
I think we have an ordinance.
On, so you probably, yeah, okay, great. Yeah, so then even better, ordinance says it's not allowed.
Okay, just, just double checking, because I know people were concerned about the potential 5G coming off a cellphone, so.
Yeah, we have an ordinance on 5G.
So I just want to, I just want to, you know, make people a little more comfortable, you know, what, what could potentially happen. So with that, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Tom, Captain O'Hara and everyone else that spoke on this. Appreciate the dialogue and answering the questions and mostly the residents' concerns. I think it's a great thing you're looking into reducing the size of the tower, but as Counselor Janino said, anytime you hear from public emergency workers that have been in the middle of it, anything that improves communication in the event of an emergency is huge. I do have one question and I think someone else had touched on this a bit earlier. Three community, communities are involved in this center, right? Were there any talks about more than one tower, one tower at the site, one tower in Winthrop, another tower in Chelsea, you know, three smaller towers in total as opposed to one?
So that's essentially how the system works. So our one tower communicates with the soldiers' home in Chelsea and it communicates with the water tower in Winthrop, but it all revolves around one hub in the middle, which, which has to be this tower. So actually, if those towers were to reduce in size, it would actually be harder for us to reach the towers, we might actually need to raise the height of our tower as the hub.
So you always need the lead tower close to, in proximity to the, to the actual center?
Correct. It's like a hub and spoke model.
And in, in the past, these centers that have come up, they require a 100-foot tower at least?
It depends on the situation, the conditions, but generally, yes. And that's why, you know, to the, to the mayor's point earlier, when we spoke to 911 about this and, you know, the, the state 911 program that distributes grants for all these programs and mentioned, have, you know, have any of these been built with, without one recently? Could you talk about a situation where that happened and they were at loss of words because this just is part and parcel of the business of growing a 911 call center to make sure we're meeting the needs of the public safety standards?
So it's never done without a tower in this, in an instance like this with this emergency center of that capacity?
Certainly new construction, right? So, you know, obviously, we have the one we have today that's suboptimal from a public safety standpoint and we've been living with it, but any new towers, any new construction, you need to have something like that to reduce the redundancy, especially in, in the world that we live in today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Green Osway.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, I'm going to start by saying, two weeks ago when this first came up, I was a dead no. Absolutely not. It's going to be visually, it's going to visually impact the entire neighborhood. I was concerned about the health risks, I was concerned about property values, but then I went to the ZBA meeting and I listened to Chief of Fire and I listened to the Chief of Police speak. I think it's essential. I think this tower is very, very important to the lives of our firefighters, our police officers and our residents of the city of Revere. I appreciate that the mayor has worked on trying to bring it down and I really hope we can get it down to at least 110, 120 feet, because I know it's essential to have it that hard to have the waves go directly to it. So we're not going around the way, the way it's being done now. I think residents need to realize that this is essential. If it was not something that would protect our city, then I would have to vote against it, but this is something that we need. And with the police department, the And with the police department, the fire department, what Captain O'Hara said today, to me, I'm for this at a lower scale if you can do it. But if it's, if it will risk what our intent is, then I would keep it at the height that it is. Thank you, and thank you for all the research you've done, and thank you for letting us all know.
Thank you. Mr. President, through you, I do want to say again, unequivocally, if we can reduce it, we will. If we can do it and do it right, and it's rational, we will do it. And then, so, Consul Cardle asked a question in the last meeting about the comparison to the Broadway Towers. So, compared to where we stand today, there's about a twenty-foot grade difference to where the tower will sit, or the, I hate the word "tower," it does make it sound even bigger. But, so, just think about that, from where you stand on the top of Broadway to where it actually plants, it's, you know, twenty, thirty feet in difference, so that's actually twenty, thirty feet in reduction. So, it, it does lose its scope of size when you're, where you, from where you are. Obviously, if you write up against it, and you're all five foot six, you know, sure, it's going to feel really big. Thank you.
Thank you. Consul Hermio is going to go first, Consul.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. I share the concerns from my colleague, Consul Ergenzio, around the OPM not being here. I'm glad that they sent along some information to help answer some of our questions. I just hope that the OPM, if they're listening, would have, would have the respect for this body to show up in person next time around. I do have some questions around the ionization and the radiation and peace, and wanted to get a sense for the layman, because it sounds like maybe President O'Hara has worked on some of this with the five-G, with the Consulwoman, kind of, if you could tell us a little bit about what the effects to the safety, the health and safety of our public safety officials are versus what we're seeing in this tower, that would be really helpful on that front.
All right, Consul, I have a question. I don't have all the numbers, like, on, on the percentages and everything, but to break it down, on the five-G mini-towers and the tower on top of the fire station, it was ionizing and non-ionizing. Ionizing is the higher, non-ionizing is the lower. This radio tower is a microwave, so if I sit up there, if I'm fighting a fire, and I'm at a telephone pole within thirty-five feet, I'm, it's radiation right through my body, all right? Now, on a, on a microwave, on a microwave tower, I mean, a microwave radio, you know, the tower that's going down McKinley, you could sit down there and, and have a vacation next to it for days, and it's going to be minimal. So, that's how I could best explain it. I mean, Tom, maybe you could break it down on, on radiation levels and everything, but this is not, it's non-ionizing, it's, it's microwaves. Has nothing to do with radiation, it's safe, so if we have a fire in the neighborhood, God forbid, and this, and we have, you know, we have the stick-up, I have no problem going up next to that tower, fighting a fire. It was the five-G towers with the radiation coming off those, and we had them tested at the station, and that's why we fought, that's why I came up here. We fought to have them removed, and we're glad we had them removed, because a lot of us were affected by it at Broadway. So, I hope that best answers your question.
No, it does, it does, and I have a couple of follow-up questions, too, around, and maybe also Chief LaVita, if she wants to chime in on this, but when we talk about mutual aid, I know we live in a very dense city, Chelsea's a dense city, and Boston's right next door, also a very dense city. And so, from a communications standpoint, how does this improve our ability to respond, not just for our own sake, but when we're talking about mutual aid for when we get called into another city? And, and what's, like, are we cutting how many seconds off, if you will, from a call? Should, and this is a redundancy system, so should all the other things fall through, how many seconds are we cutting off, or maybe minutes or hours?
So, to answer your question, it's more not how many seconds off, it's more having the ability to have communications within a building, to be able to call them, have them come in. Under our current system, let's say we have a car accident and it takes out a telephone pole, if the fiber gets cut, if we have a transformer fire, if the fiber gets cut, broken, we'll go into our backup system. Our backup system currently, when we're in a building, the interior of a building, we have no ability to speak to one another. We lose that ability. That affects life safety of not only our citizens, but of our firefighters as well. So, by doing this tower, and just so you know, the, the fire department believes that this tower at its fullest height is crucial. With it at its full height, it has direct line of sight to every one of the other sites so that we, if we do have a backup system kick in, we don't lose communications within these buildings. This is a life safety issue, and this can save lives.
So, if I'm understanding this correctly, this is going to make sure that y'all can respond better should something fall through?
That's correct.
But also allow you, particularly in fire, and for the fire department?
And police as well.
And police to, to respond more effectively on-site.
Yes, especially interior of buildings.
Great.
It, it, it's huge, it really is.
Awesome. Well, thank you both for, for your answers.
Very good.
Looks like Chief LaVita may want to add something as well.
Just, just so you're aware, so, it's not only affecting the rec's ability to speak to the officers, it's the officers being able to speak to each other, too. So, it's affecting the portable radio system, which allows us to communicate inside buildings, or if somebody's in a building, back out. So, I just want to clarify that.
That's very helpful. Thank you, Chief. I think that's, I think vital information that you probably need on hand, live, not ten minutes later, once the thing is happened, right?
Seconds, seconds mean everything, and just to give you an indication of, you know, our radio system, we've, we've invested in the, the best radios, you know, for a reason. So, they're more important to many police officers, including myself, than firearms. So, you see, you know, a couple hundred dollars for a firearm, twenty times that per portable radio that the officers carry on, on their hip, you know, day in and day out. So, the, the infrastructure, they're only as good as the infrastructure, which is, I think, why we're all here today.
Thank you. Again, all three of you for your answers.
Thank you, Consul. Consul McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, did anybody look at the license that Devon Enterprise commissioned, the criteria of that? Because it does say in, in one of their design requirements that if a tower with a height of at least a hundred feet shall be designed structurally, electrically, and in all respect to accommodate three antennas, we're only going to get one, right? That's what it's saying right here, and it says, "The applicant and two other towers over sixty feet shall accommodate at least one additional tower, antenna. All towers must be designed to allow the future rearrangements of antennas and antennas mounted at various heights."
So, there, there are multiple antennas and, and microwaves installed, and is, is part of the design in the package that was submitted to the ZBA? And so, the, the point of, of those potentially changing over time as technologies change, so I think the idea is the ways that we would communicate would change over time, but there will be multiple antennas, not just the one. And, and the bulk of them will be a hundred feet and below, and then there's the main one, the, the microwave tower for redundancy's sake, which is at a hundred-and-forty-five now, but might get brought down further.
So, what you're saying is, it's, it's, it's not going to only be one, it's going to be multiple?
One structure, but like, like an antenna arm.
Would be this, with this, with this, with this?
But a few, but not hundreds.
Okay.
Yeah, but one structure.
Visually, visually speaking, everything above the building.
Like those fake trees that they have, right?
Of sorts, yeah. It won't be as obnoxious as the, the cell towers, which are, are just much more significant and pertinent structures behind it. These are much more sleek and designed in line with, with the tower.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Consul. Permission to speak from the chair? I appreciate the time tonight, Tom, Mr. Mayor, Fire Department Chief. It's, I remember the passion that Captain O'Hara came up here a few years back with the five-Gs, and if for a second he thought there was going to be an issue with these, this antenna, we would have that same passion up here. And as Consul Janino and Haas said, you know, hearing from them and understanding the importance of this tower, I would hate to be here in the future and say, "Man, if we had fifty more feet, maybe we wouldn't have lost communication, maybe those guys would still be with us." So, I can't battle over fifty feet when it comes to life safety equipment and the men and women of our fire and police departments. So, however we can get this done that's best suitable, that's best going to suffice us, the city, and, and our first responders, is what we need to do. So, thank you for coming up and keeping us updated.
Thank you for your time and your latitude to the council, and just a reminder, we'll be in front of the ZBA. We are going to do the study to see if we can get this size and scope worked on, and we'll also share renderings with the entire city council. Okay?
I just have one, one quick question. Who's going to be doing this supplementary study? Is it Introba?
So, the supplementary study will be done by Introba, but then there's going to be a peer review with our OPM.
Okay.
Where they'll be speaking to some of the designers of their other facilities, basically reviewing the review, if you will.
Are you comfortable with Introba?
I am, and certainly our public safety team is, and I'm even more comfortable knowing the approach that our OPM will take, essentially providing some internal peer review.
Okay. They'll, they'll show up. Okay, thanks. So...
Thank you, Consul. Thank you, Tom. This will be placed.
So, Mr. President, there might be a couple of people that want to speak. I, I know there's a public comment, it's right after it, so, you know, if, maybe not, I'm just guessing.
Okay. Is anyone here to speak on this here? Name and address.
Sure, Stephanie, just, oh, Seven Reservoir Avenue. I was one of the people who did not get notified of this, even though I'm an abutto to the section of the site that was not included in the application. So, I'm hoping that the next time around, everybody on the bottom of Reservoir Ave, they're all abutts to the people on Yaman Street, get notified properly. Secondly, I want to say this, I haven't heard one mention about quality of life, and lowering the height of this by forty feet is not a meaningful change, because you're still leaving us with a hundred-foot structure plunked down in the middle of our neighborhood. And I can tell you this much, it is an absolute fact and reality. The real estate industry has done multiple studies on the negative impact of communication towers on property values, and they will be negatively impacted, and our property values are going to go down. Now, it's one thing to talk about, they can go to the assessors and ask for an abatement, but that's putting the onus on the homeowner to have to go prove that their property values have been diminished because of this, and it does zero, it, it's not beneficial when somebody's going to go put their house up for sale. They're going to have a much more difficult time selling their property. That's, that's what I want, those are the couple of points I wanted to make, but I really want to ask that every option is thoroughly explored to find alternative solutions to this, because having this plunked down in the middle of an entirely dense, overstressed urban neighborhood where there are multiple homes, it's, it's, it's almost, I can understand what people would say, "Well, you're speaking out against public safety and early childhood education facility." That's not the case at all. It's, it's not being opposed to those things to, to say, "We don't want a hundred-and-forty-five foot tower plunked down in our neighborhood." And I do want to say this, that I understand that there may be additional costs to do something differently here, but you can't weigh quality of life and diminution of property values on multiple homes that are going to be impacted this with, with the, the cost that may be incurred by doing something alternatively. We're talking about a lot of money here. State's coming up with twenty-two million dollars, that leaves the city of Revere coming up with eight million. What's a little bit more to, to take care of this, this situation and find an alternative site? And that's what I want to say. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Name and address.
Bonnie Curran, Barrett Street, Revere. First of all, they deserve a thousand feet because you need it. And secondly, is that I believe, I forget what I was going to ask, but from what I read, the law says that they could have two more antennas, and I'm worried about cellphone antennas, and that's it right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Possibly we can do a thousand feet and put it over by the old airport, maybe? I mean, they need a thousand feet.
Well, public comment is next, right? Okay, so, we're there then.
We're going to continue with public comment, so if you are here to speak on anything else besides this, when you come up, please give your name, number. If you're a Revere resident or business owner, you have two minutes, name, address, and motion you're speaking on. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cory O'Hara, 270 Beet Street. I don't know the motion number, but I'm here to discuss the RC4 zoning proposal near Fennel Street. Hopefully, you guys have a timer, because I don't. And, you know, maybe you guys might want to strap yourselves down, so. Oh, sorry, just kidding. I'm going to talk as fast as I can, but I, this is just...
I don't want to have to get up and shut my mouth.
Please don't. I, I, I just, I'm going to be quick. Okay, so, good evening, Council President and members of the council. My name is Cory O'Hara. I'm here tonight to speak about the RC4 zoning proposal near Fennel Street. According to the planning chief, Tom, I, I don't want to misspeak his last name, Zarowski, thank you. This new zoning district could add up to a hundred, a hundred affordable units to Revere's housing stock. If true, that's a meaningful step forward, but we will need full transparency to ensure these units, units actually qualify as affordable and legally count towards our subsidized housing inventory with the state. The city has previously implemented zoning tools intended to promote affordability, such as the Smart Growth Overlay Districts. Yet, time and again, developers have built in these zones with little to no affordable units and no deed restrictions. That's why total transparency and documentation must be presented upfront for any new zone like this one. No more promises, just proof. This verification is essential for two major, major reasons. First, if this is not verified as a hundred percent affordability, there is no meaningful public benefit, and that opens the door to potential claims of spot zoning, which undermines both public trust and legal standing. Second, Revere is already under pressure from developers using Chapter 40B to bypass local zoning because of our SHI percentage continues to fall below the ten percent compliance threshold. Without verified countable units, we risk falling further out of compliance and inviting more 40B threats. Additionally, since the site board is Chelsea, Massachusetts law requires their planning board to be notified of any zoning changes and given a chance to respond. That proof of notice must be part of the public record. The, in Chelsea, their housing authority is already redeveloping that entire area that's abutting this proposed land, and I assume that's why this is now being an effort for us to develop that sliver of land. But we need more than just permission to build, we need an enforceable agreement. So, who's providing which services, who benefits from what, and who's responsible for delivering and paying for those services? These are not just details to be figured out after the fact, they must be clarified and documented in advance. So, this, I have some infrastructure questions. I know that the water and sewer is probably going to come from Chelsea, because there's no feasible connections from Revere, but that has to be formally agreed by, with Chelsea. Revere Police and... Revere Police and Fire serve...if they serve this site, there's gonna be likely delays. Who will be responsible for providing emergency response, and under what agreement? Should Revere taxpayers carry the cost of schools and services for the site, which operates more like Chelsea? If that's the case, shouldn't we be exploring an intermunicipal service agreement to formally clarify these responsibilities and ensure Revere isn't left to absorb the costs alone? Finally, there are concerns that this may be wetlands or marshland. Has the Conservation Commission been involved? If so, those documents must be published before any decision is made. If this project is truly 100% affordable, meets environmental and infrastructure standards, and actually moves Revere closer to safe harbor from 40B, I believe it would be a great step forward, but we need proof, not promises. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, it sounds like you were in the meeting I was at over the weekend, because we talked about all those things.
Oh, awesome.
And yes, they do have to go before...they will have to be approved by the state to move forward on affordable housing. It will go against our numbers. We are in talks with the city of Chelsea already to have a dual coverage on both...on all options, public safety as well as schooling. Maybe there's a person that lives...they feel as though they live closer to Prattville, and they wanna go to Prattville. We're in discussions now, so we're very...the building won't be completed till the end of 2028, but we are in the preliminary discussions, but all your points are very valid.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not gonna be 100% affordable and go towards the inventory...
Yep.
Then it's not worth us investing any...
I agree.
More discussion into it, because it just...we keep getting threats from developers and attorneys that they're gonna turn around and, you know, hold us under their thumb for the 40B, and I think if we're gonna have shared services with Chelsea, I think it would be a great project.
Yep.
And, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, closing that side. That's it for public comments.
Unfinished business. Calendar item number seven, an ordinance for the remending Chapter 12.20, poles, wires, and cables of the Revere Revised Ordinances. This is on the third reading.
Request a roll call for the third and final reading.
Roll call in the third reading for an ordinance relative to poles, wires, and cables. Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Swaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Herramio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
No.
No, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
No.
No, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes.
But with the noes, this will automatically get tabled until September 29th.
Calendar item number eight, council order 25186, revocation of Chapter 148, license number 651, 22 Naples Road, granted January 24, 22, for cause.
Counselor?
Mr. President, Honorable Members of Revere City Council, James Cipolletta, 5 Fremont Street in Winthrop, on behalf of Mario's and the property owners at 22 Naples Road.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you both for being here tonight. So since the last time we've spoke, the building commissioner has actually gone out there. I thank him for that. The building commissioner has yet to sign off on this property for the compliance of all the conditions of the special permit for two reasons. One, the planters that they have out front are not acceptable. I do wanna thank them for the conditions that they have complied with, cleaning up the rear of the building, painting the parking lines. I do appreciate the compliance there, but also, August 11th, there was a truck parked in the fire lane overnight. And also, September, I believe it was 3rd or 4th, when the building commissioner went out, there was another truck parked in the fire lane. So, I have...I don't know how much more lenient I can be about this issue. And I really just wanna make sure that we all understand that you can drive through to the back, but I'd like some sort of answer as to why you keep parking vehicles in there when you know you're not supposed to. I mean, I just...I'm at a loss here.
So my client has given me the answers to two of the questions. The first being the older August 11th incident. That truck was unauthorized to be there. He doesn't know who it was. He didn't authorize it. And didn't know that the truck was there. The more recent one, there was a truck parked in the lane that goes around the building. The people were there.
The fire lane.
Fire lane.
Thank you.
And it was attended. It was not an unattended vehicle. And I've reached out to Deputy Chief Cheever. I expect I'm gonna see him tomorrow at Site Plan Review to find out what the legality is of that, because to me, it's sort of a gray area. I understand that if there's something there in the fire lane that is unattended, that poses a problem. If someone is sitting in the vehicle and he stopped, or more appropriately, I guess, standing in the fire lane, I would have to get an opinion and would defer it to the deputy. So I think that that can be resolved as of tomorrow morning, when I see him. And I've also, again, Mr. President, through you, requested the building commissioner to meet...I understand I'll see him in the morning as well. So this thing, after the end of the summertime and when things get back into a little quicker tempo, I think is moving along a little more swiftly than it did in the past.
Thank you. So I'm not buying the excuse that you didn't know that whose truck was on your property behind a locked gate. I'm sorry. I'm not even gonna ask you if it was there, 'cause I know you're gonna say no, but you just admitted that it was there. But I'm not buying that you don't know who parked a truck in...next to your building behind a locked gate. I just...I can't buy...at this point, I'm not buying it.
Sorry. We're not saying we don't know about that one. The August 11th overnight one, I was telling Ms. Cipolletta that when Paul Chevers came down about that complaint, I told Paul that I don't know anything about that. No, when I came into work at 7:30 in the morning, there was no truck there, and I have cones parked in that fire lane in front of my building. So there says no parking there. So I don't have any knowledge of a truck being parked overnight, and if there was, I don't know anything about it.
Okay, so one of us is lying. Okay. Now, as far as this whole idea that it's attended, how long can you attend a vehicle in a fire lane? If you do that in any fire lane, I keep using Market Basket as an example. If you sit parked in a fire lane, you can sit there as long as you want until somebody comes and tells you to move. Right? So... No, you can't. No. Okay, that's my whole point. You're not supposed to park in a fire lane. Ever. So I'm sorry, but if you're the property owner, it's your responsibility to make sure that you know what's going on on your property, especially with a property that has a Chapter 148 license that allows flammables on their property. So now you're telling us that you didn't know about a truck that was parked there overnight. I saw it. I'm sorry. If you're gonna stand up there and say you have no recollection or you don't know, or you don't know who's...about the truck...and let's talk about the fire inspector, secondly. When he went out there, he knew exactly which fire lane that I wanted him to inspect, and he purposely, in my opinion, purposely inspected the wrong fire lane that was on Naples Road, not the...this has nothing to do with you. He...I sent him out there for that truck that was parked there. He looked at the prop...the fire lane that was on Naples Road, not the one at your property. Okay? So that whole report is null and void, as far as I'm concerned. I would like the other fire inspector to go out there and take a look at it. However, all I want, all I have wanted, is for the building commissioner to say, you're in compliance, but the funniest part is that the day he went out there without telling anybody, there's a truck parked there. He got a picture of it. Okay? I don't care if it was attended or not. You're not allowed to be in a fire...if I had Halef, I'd pull it all out. I don't know what else to say. So my...I'm speaking to you and to the council. I would like to table this one more meeting. If there are any infractions of the special permit conditions between now and September 29th, when we meet again, I am going to move and ask this council to vote to revoke. This has been going on since September 24th, 2024. It was September whatever, the end of September last year, this has been going on. I don't wanna deal with it anymore. I have been so lenient. Counselor Cipolletta, you weren't here last week. We tabled it. I didn't wanna deal with this without you guys here. I have been kind, I have been lenient, I'm over it. Please do the right thing. That's all I ask.
I will respond, Mr. President. Counselor is absolutely correct. He's been more than accommodating, taking my phone calls at probably inconvenient times, but we're...you know, we are making a good effort to get this squared away, and I hopefully am going to have the fire inspector and the building inspector hostage at that table tomorrow at Site Plan Review, and I can have them both in the same place at the same time.
And I will go on record stating that if they both write the report that says that this property is in compliance, and all I care about is the city council's special permit that was awarded in '21, and then the conditions of that. If they say you're in compliance, you have my word, you won't even have to show up at the next meeting, 'cause I'll place this whole thing on file. That's it. That's all I want. Please stop parking in the fire lane. Please. 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 One more. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino Swaya?
I just wanna state something. The fire lane must remain unobstructed at all times. No parking, stopping, standing, whether you're in the vehicle or not, you cannot be there. There is no vehicle to be in the fire lane, whether it has somebody in it or not. It is the state law. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was on the council in '21 when the special permit came up in front of us. And the reason why we voted on this is because of the fact that the hazardous materials that are in this place, they need some sort of, you know, a barrier around it to...the apparatuses, the fire apparatuses, to get around it. And we voted unanimously. So to obstruct this is not the right thing to do. So I hope you can...Mr. Cipolletta, I hope you can talk to everybody and get this problem resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, and if...when you're done with that meeting tomorrow, if you could please contact the ward counselor, and hopefully we can get this resolved sooner than later.
Actually, the ward counselor is Counselor Garino Swaya, and I'm doing all of this with her permission, by the way, but Counselor Cipolletta has been incredibly communicative with me, with the building commissioner, so there's no doubt that he's gonna communicate. So I just want this solved, but I'm not gonna let it go unless...if they keep breaking the rules. That's it. Thank you. Motion to table.
This will be tabled till the 29th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Next up is the zoning subcommittee report.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. We all know that the zoning subcommittee met this evening at 5 o'clock with a brief meeting. The first item up was an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinance relative to minor corrections to the accessory dwelling unit zoning ordinance. That was voted out favorably, and so I ask for a vote on that.
Okay.
Please.
On the ordinance of zoning relative to the minor corrections of accessory dwelling, audit on a second reading. Audit on a third and final reading. Request a roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances relative to minor corrections to the accessory dwelling unit regulations? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Herramio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been engrossed and ordained.
Next up was an ordinance establishing zoning provisions for battery energy storage systems in the city of Revere. This item was tabled. Next up was 529 Broadway, and there was a request for...to withdraw without prejudice. The committee voted favorably on that request. So I guess the counselor is here, wants to speak, I guess, but then we'll have a roll call to allow it.
Counselor Simeoni.
Mike, 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 Mike. Nobody's pressing that button.
So, this council was kind enough back in September 3rd, when...after we had worked as best as we could at the time to try to satisfy some of the neighbors' concerns, which we obviously didn't. We sought from this body a request for withdrawal without prejudice, which we asked for in the letter. We then asked if there are any other things the council wanted, and they subsequently said would like to have a vote of the subcommittee on the zoning to also withdraw, and that has been done. So I respectfully ask that you allow it to withdraw today, and as I said to many years, we'll just have to get back and try to do a better job. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor.
On the motion?
Madam Clerk?
Shall the city council allow the applicant to withdraw the special permit application for 529 Broadway without prejudice? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Herramio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit application has been withdrawn without prejudice. Communications, calendar item number 12, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Karu Pek to the Human Rights Commission. Calendar item number 13, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Chief Cullen to the Human Rights Commission.
This will be referred to appointments September 29th.
Calendar item number 14, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Maria Levita to the Human Rights Commission.
Refer to appointments September 29th.
Calendar item number 15, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Viviana Catano to the Board of Health.
Refer to appointments.
Calendar item number 16, communication from the chief of planning and community development requesting a zoning ordinance and zoning map amendment for the purpose of establishing a new district, RC4.
This will be ordered to a public hearing September 29th.
Calendar item number 17, communication from the director of finance requesting a loan order for McMacken Field in the amount of $4.2 million.
Ordered to a public hearing September 29th.
Motions, calendar item number 18, motion presented by counselors Garino Swaya and Zambudo that the city council present Irma Achitulow with a certificate of commendation in recognition and celebration of her 90th birthday.
Counselor Garino Swaya?
I'll hold my comments for the presentation.
Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll hold most of my comments, but I have to say that this is just a wonderful lady and well-deserved. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I must say the same thing, because we don't get to speak, the councilors really don't get to speak, so she's just a wonderful lady, and I think this is a wonderful motion. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. And all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counselor Garino Swaya in the interest of public safety for our students and school faculty, that the mayor request the traffic commission to hold a public hearing on the following proposed amendments relative to overnight parking on school property.
Counselor Garino Swaya?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay. To strengthen the, to strengthen safety and security at our schools, I propose the overnight parking ban, to prohibit cars from parking in the parking lots. I've had complaints, particularly from the Paul Revere School, of certain cars parked there every single night, and they're still there during the day when the teachers are coming in, taking up valuable spots that are in that front lot. But after putting in this motion, Chief Maria Levita and Captain Tom Malone jumped right on to help me out, to find a solution. Leaving the cars there unattended overnight is really a safety concern. The obstructed, it obstructs emergency access, and what could happen is unattended vehicles overnight raise liability concerns that, God forbid, something is in that vehicle the following day. We don't know what could possibly happen. It interferes with snow removal and routine maintenance. In light of all the incidents that have occurred in schools across the nation, unattended or occupied vehicles pose a potential threat, as individuals could remain inside them and use them for more dangerous items. Prohibiting overnight traffic is a proactive safety measure that will help protect the children while ensuring that school parking lots remain fully accessible to staff, students, and visitors during school hours. So I think what the chief is looking into is the no parking after 6:00 AM, which would be, or 8:00 AM as school, before school begins. We're going to send this to traffic, if that's okay with you, and we'll discuss it in traffic, but I think they already have a safety plan ready to let this go into fruition, come into fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Councilor Kelly, that the mayor request Mastott to expand the southbound deceleration lane entrance into North Gate Shopping Center on Squire Road in order to reduce traffic and accidents on Squire Road. Council Zambudo has recused from this motion.
Council Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion really speaks for itself. This area is prone to heavy traffic congestion, accidents, backups, and I think this may alleviate some of that congestion and traffic if we, we have room there for the island to be widened so that that deceleration lane can be extended, and some of the traffic can get over to that North Gate entrance a little bit sooner, reducing traffic in the other two lanes. So I'm hoping this is something, I know that this was actually discussed 10 years ago, and it, everybody was all for it, but unfortunately, it never came to fruition, so I'm hoping we can get it done now. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Councilor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I completely agree with my councilor on my right, but I know when I was on the city council, council, two years ago, Councilor Serino and Councilor Rizzo filed this, and I guess Mastott did multiple studies, and they found that the infrastructure underneath this road was so invasive with pipes, it would cost millions and millions of dollars to fix it. So they said it was very, very complicated. So that's why nothing's been done, but it was brought up, it wasn't 10 years ago, it was brought up a couple of years ago by Serino and, I know Serino and Rizzo. So I just wanted to say that this is what's going on with Mastott. They've done multiple studies and they can't do anything. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. All in favor, all, oh, Council Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. No, I was on the council when we voted that in, and there's a giant MWRA line there, to what Council McKenna said, it would cost millions of dollars. However, I'm not opposed to sending another, another motion their way to say, hey, can you look at this again? Because back then, I mean, just backing that lane up, I don't know how many cars it would, you know, I don't know how much traffic it would alleviate, but it is a good idea. It's just, if, you know, if they're not willing to move that pipe, then, that's all.
If I may?
Absolutely.
I would want them to revisit this issue, because especially where that area is just getting more and more congested, we're getting a car wash there, so anything that can be done to alleviate some of that traffic would be appreciated, so I think it should be revisited. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Councilor Kelly, that the mayor request Chris Caramella, superintendent of Public Works, to appear before the city council to provide an update on the consent decree entered in 2010 between the city of Revere and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency.
Council Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. This motion pretty much speaks for itself as well. I know there's a lot of miscommunication out there regarding the consent decree. Some people are under the impression that we're, that it's coming to a close, there's information out there that it's not coming to a close, that it's being extended, so I think it would be important for him to come in and just give us an update. I did speak to him about this, and he'd say, he said that he would be happy to come in and give a presentation, so I think it would just be good for everyone to just discuss the topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Kelly. Council McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. This was discussed in June when we were doing the budget hearing, the subcommittee. Nick Risum and Chris Caramella did come up and talk about this in length, and there was an update. So I just wanted to say, this was done in June.
Mr. President, I did speak to him, and he said he'd be happy to come in, so.
Thank you, councilor. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Councilor Cogliandro, that the city council approve the following special legislation, an act permitting the city of Revere to establish penalties and liens for noise ordinance violations.
Council Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm not looking to change the noise ordinance that we have on the books in any way, I'm looking to change the way that we deal with fines. I believe when we get a fine, it's under 21D right now, it goes from our police department to the courthouse, and we never see it again. I, I would like to make this 40U so that we have control over the process of this. If they don't pay, we can lien their house. We can't do that currently the way that we have it structured. You know, for every, every responsible person that has a party in their backyard and plays music loud and turns it down at a reasonable hour, we have someone else who just doesn't respect this. We had some very big problems the other night in my ward, which prompted me to work with the clerk to figure this out. We just did this for water meters, I believe. We just switched it from 21D to 40U, so I would like support on this so that we can give these noise violation fines actual teeth. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Thank you. Council Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, I agree with the council, and the only issue I have is enforcement. And, you know, I know Council Janino used to deal with this stuff all the time, and he used to have a decibel meter, but by the time the police usually get to a location, it stopped, so they really can't get to, find anybody at the time. And I don't even know if they still have that decibel meter or even use it if they do have it. So if they don't, I think we should get a couple of them, so a couple of the cruisers can have them and be able to justify the ordinance and be able to issue that, this particular fine. So I could do it as a separate motion that, you know, the police department order two decibel meters to put in cruisers, unless, unless you want to allow us to go attach it to.
Mr. President, through you. Councilor Novoselfsky, I agree with your motion 100%. I don't know about mixing it with this one, I'd probably want to do it separately, if that's okay. So maybe, can we vote on this, and then, Council, you can put it on the floor, happy to support it.
So, Council Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. From you to Councilor Cogliandro, I just want to make sure, and I know we talked briefly about it, but automobiles will be included in this noise ordinance?
I certainly hope so, because that was one of the big problems over the weekend, the loud mufflers, yes, motorcycles, Council Garino-Sowaya. I believe noise is noise with this ordinance. Anything that's too loud, they can write a ticket for, but like I said, just to circle back, this, this will give it teeth. We'll be able to find them, and if they don't want to pay, then there'll be consequences.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Council Hermio?
Mr. President, I appreciate the intent of this ordinance. I would just ask our colleagues, all of our colleagues here, or someone can be an answer, how this, to Councilor Novoselfsky, enforceability question, how we are able to adequately document high-decibel levels and prevent, for example, misuse of the statute, which would be, would become a state law per this, from, you know, let's say, neighbors that are really close to each other and just don't like each other, and are calling on each other, and now for repeated offenses, maybe are getting penalties? Where we have an affordability crisis, where even homeowners can't afford to pay their taxes here in this, in this city, how do we ensure that these fines don't stack up just for petty differences between neighbors? And then now someone who's been here for all their whole life, bought their home here, and is just barely making ends meet, doesn't inadequately get essentially criminalized for having a dispute with a neighbor, or something like that, and then all of a sudden, they're out of the home? I would just, you know, that, that feels to me like a pertinent question, and, you know, I would ask, I guess, you know, we have a former police officer on the, on the city council. How is, you know, how would you go about approaching this? How would we ensure that, you know, neighborly disputes aren't turning into essentially the criminalization of someone in their home, and essentially costing them their home and their livelihood? I guess that's just my big, big question about this.
Council Janino, do you have any answer to that?
Again, unfortunately, I spent a lot of time with the noise ordinances in Revere over the past couple decades, and there's different types of noises. There's different, motor vehicle noise, there's neighbor noise, different violations, different fines for it, different ways to measure the noise, different ways to go after the people making the noise. The problem that we ran into in Revere was on a household party, neighborhood noise, the tenants playing radios. Would go and find the tenant. The ticket went nowhere.
Exactly.
All right? There was nothing to attach it to. If you attach to homeowners, then it had, had teeth to it. But the civil ticket went nowhere. Noise for motor vehicles. The registry sets standards for that. We had sound meters back in the day. In order to get a motor vehicle, it can't just be a step on the gas and go, it had to be a constant noise over a set distance, set distance with an open area, nothing behind it, no echoes, when you're, when you're sighted them. I mean, it's, it's a good idea, but there's a lot more to it than you realize. I know what you mean. We could work it out and.
Mr. President, through, through you.
Council Cogliandro? Okay. Council Hermio?
Yeah, through, to Councilor Janino. As it relates to the enforceability piece, you mentioned that tying it to the homeowner or the car owner made it a little bit more enforceable. My, my question to you, because I know that police officers often will serve in court providing testimony for anything that could happen, is in related matters, not, we don't, now, we don't have a statute like this, but in related matters where a police officer is having to provide maybe verbal testimony to a court, how often was, was that a definitive factor to ensuring that the person was convicted of said crime or violation, per se? And do we think that the technology exists right now to impartially, impartially carry out a statute like this? Yeah, a statute like this, and that would place a police officer or a fire public official in the best position to defend such a citation?
Most of the times, the noise violations fell under the health department, not the police department in the city. It's a health issue with the 40Us. And the one time we did make it to court, the court bounced it out because the property and violation was grandfathered in from before the ordinance took effect. Like I said, there's a lot, there's a lot to it that you'd have to look into, you know? I mean, if somebody's going after someone, picking on someone randomly and causing them undue hardships over and over again, it's never gone that far.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councilor. Council Cogliandro?
Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. Through you to the clerk. Madam Clerk, I don't know if you have a number off the top of your head, but how many 21D violations have you seen this year? Like, from all of them?
Maybe a couple, mostly for dog violations.
Okay. And that's my point, is on Elmwood Ave the other night, we had three police calls to the same home over two hours, and there still wasn't a ticket written. What the reason is, I don't know. Maybe it's because there's no teeth in it. These people were causing a ruckus down at their house, decided to play a full-on 10-on-10 soccer game in the middle of the road at 3:00 AM. I played soccer for 10 years. I'd probably sprained my ankles now, but, you know, something like that is unacceptable. And if people are warned twice and they have to have a police officer out there a third time, a ticket should be issued to them, and they should go through the 40U process, where they still have an opportunity to defend themselves and speak on their behalf. Like I said, if, if they don't pay the ticket, you know, we can get them to pay the ticket one way or the other. You know, so again, I don't know what the reason is for the lack of 21D fines, but maybe it's because they don't have any teeth. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Council Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regarding the police, you know, when they go out on a disturbance like this, I don't know if they have the proper ticket to present to the violator, because right now, what they'd have to do is send a referral to the inspectional services as witnesses to write up a particular ticket. But if the police had the authority to write a 40U, then they could do it under this new ordinance, this special legislation, just like we did with the fire lanes, where the fire department can issue fire zone tickets, but only the deputies can issue actual fire zone tickets if they find park, no parking, if there's parking in a fire zone, a fire lane. But we have to give the authority to the police to write once this is passed, or is part of it even.
Right.
To make this authorize the police department to issue a 40U ticket.
Right. And in, in understanding that and hearing everyone tonight, I really did want to give this a vote tonight, but I'm wondering if we do put this in legislative affairs so we can hear from the police department, the, you know, I mean, I think if we're going to put more responsibilities onto the police officers of writing noise complaints and whatnot, I think there should be a, a, all-out legislative process hearing.
Totally fine with me, Mr. President.
Thank you. So I believe this will be referred to legislative affairs. Thank you.
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Councilor Garino-Sowaya, that the mayor request the DPW and Traffic Commission in coordination with Mastott to install bollards at 938 North Shaw Road in an appropriate position so as to prevent vehicles from colliding with a residential structure and fire hydrant at said property. The residential structure at this address has been hit multiple times.
Council Garino-Sowaya?
Motion speaks for itself. Please send to traffic.
Thank you. Council, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
And late motion presented by councilors Hermio and President Silvestri, that the city council pull from the Climate Sustainability and Workforce Committee an ordinance further amending wage theft prevention policies in the city of Revere in order to a public hearing on September 29th.
Council Hermio?
Mr. President, thank you, and thank you for the leeway, and I hope my, our colleagues will join us in this effort to pull the wage theft ordinance. This is something that we've been working. This is something that we've been working with folks in, in labor, to ensure that we're protecting the, we're protecting the wages and the payment of any worker in the city of Revere, and it's just sat in the committee for, for a little bit longer than we intended it for, and I know that our brothers and sisters who are working class members here in the city are anxious to have a public hearing about this, and we're trying to get it out for the next public hearing. So I hope that we can make that happen.
Thank you, Counselor, and I will save my comments to the public hearing on September 29th. That closes the business for today's meeting. Thank you for being with us.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
Point of personal information.
Counselor, state your point.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, to all the folks around, everybody knows this time of the year is the Jewish New Year, and September 22nd is Rosh Hashanah, which is the actual New Year of the Jewish faith, and it's 5786 is the year coming up, and then following October 3rd is Yom Kippur, and everybody has heard about that, it's where we do our fasting. So at this time, I want to wish all my Jewish friends and people that can hear this, a Happy New Year and Lashana Tova, Tikat Tevo. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Happy New Year. Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you September 29th.